All right, folks, the hour is upon us. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, December the eighth, 2020. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Riley Bettis, if he would, please lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council. If you would like to join us, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Thinking about Christmas's past, and one of my favorite memories comes from grammar school. And this was back way back in a time when in elementary school you could even put on a play about the birth of Jesus, which we did every year. And back about the third grade, I got to do the narrative from the Gospel of Luke, which basically lays down the whole story. And that was, we had to memorize it back in those days, but I didn't want to take that chance. I didn't want to mess it up. So that's what I'm going to read here. "And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, Fear not; for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day in the city of David a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be assigned unto you. You shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly host praising God and saying, Glory to God in the highest, and on earth, peace, goodwill toward men." Let us pray. Loving Father, help us remember the birth of Jesus, that we may share in the song of the angels, the gladness of the shepherds, and the worship of the wise men. Close the door of hate and open the door of love all over the world. Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every greeting. Deliver us from evil by the blessing which Christ brings and teach us to be merry with clear hearts. May the Christmas morning make us happy to be your children and the Christmas evening bring us to our beds with grateful thoughts, forgiving and forgiven for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Mr. Bettis, this must be the season for reflection. Mr. Bettis and my wife were in school together and just this past Sunday, she was reminiscing about school plays and the Christmas plays, and she said you always had to memorize it in using the King James Version.
Absolutely.
And so she was bemoaning the fact that she had to learn her lines from the King James Version. So, you know, that, I think we've just dated ourselves. That was probably before they had the new modern version, I guess, so. Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening? With that, then, council, let's move to the council meeting. Minutes from November the 24th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion and they be received.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk this evening? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we were to have a presentation this evening from Mr. Alan Smith. Many of you know Mr. Smith. He's the former president and CEO of the Greer Chamber of Commerce. He now serves as the president and CEO of One Spartanburg Incorporated. That is the umbrella organization for their economic development and Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors Bureau and a couple of other things that all fall sort of under one umbrella and his guidance. He had hoped to be able to come this evening and give us an update on their efforts, including some new efforts that they're going to be unveiling in 2021, but he had something come up and is not going to be able to make it, so we will invite him back after the first of the year. With that, then, we'll move to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Briefly, just want to remind you of a couple of things. One, the employee appreciation breakfast begins at 7:30 on Friday morning, so if you've not, if you attended, intend on attending, please let Ms. Duncan know by Thursday. Want to thank Greer Relief and, of course, our staff for a fantastic Christmas parade. It was my first one, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was, I walked up and down both sides, just kind of getting a feel for it, and the one resonating thing with me is was just everybody was in a good mood. I mean, everybody was in a good mood from one end to the next, so thoroughly got you in the Christmas spirit. The one thing I do need from council tonight is council, in the last budget, allowed for business license rebate as a kind of a pandemic relief mechanism. And in the letters that went out to the businesses, we didn't put an end date on that, on the request for that rebate. We used an administrative date of October 31st purely for auditing purposes. Some of the businesses that could potentially benefit from that did not get it in by October 31st, and so we've had some concerned folks. My recommendation to council, and I need some guidance from you, or at least your opinion, is that we notify everyone that's eligible for that benefit or for that rebate, that we will move the date to close of business January 31st. So unless there's an objection from council, we'll notify through our business license office all those folks that could potentially benefit from it, that close of business January 31st will be the end date. So if there's no problem with that, I think we'll just move forward with that.
I've actually had some complaints about it.
Okay, so you?
I'm for it.
Okay, good. All right.
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it'd be wise. We need to wrap it up, but I think there was some confusion about, about the parameters of it, so I think notifying those folks that haven't taken advantage of it and given a drop dead date would be, would be preferable.
Gotcha. Two more quick things. One, the street cut ordinance has been an issue before you and has been subsequently tabled. Staff was directed to meet with our stakeholders who partnered with us on our utility provision. We've had an initial meeting with the Commission of Public Works. It was a, you know, very fruitful time together. I would just let council know that we're working through some, some items with CPW and intend to continue to meet with those other utility providers, and we'll bring this back at a time I think we feel like we're ready for y'all to truly consider it. And the last thing is more of a public service announcement. We are seeing a tremendous number of auto break-ins, not only in the city of Greer, but just around Greenville, Spartanburg County. It's been an issue that the Sheriff's Department and various municipal agencies have had to deal with. So with it being Christmas and this going on, I just want to recommend to you, talk to constituents and certainly, since we have the press in the room, that, you know, don't leave stuff in your cars and don't leave those Amazon boxes in your cars. Don't, don't make an attractive nuisance. And just take care that we're doing our best to get this thing eradicated, at least in Greer, but it's, it's a reality, so just want to pass that along. Unless there's any other questions for me, that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, sir. As always, the administrator is available to answer any questions or to clarify anything from his report this evening. Feel free to, to contact him in that regard. We'll move to appointments of boards and commissions, the first of which we have and the only of which we have this evening in terms of appointments is in relationship to the Recreation Association. In District One, John Bohannon's term expires at the end of this year. Any new or information in that regard?
Yes, your question, Mayor. John has served well. He, he almost has 100% attendance. He's very active, and he has moved out of District One, but he still resides in the city. And so I would like to renominate John for service in District One on Recreation Board.
There comes this a motion to hear a second. Any questions or comments in regards to Mr. Bohannon's service? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. District Five, any new information in regards to Ms. Taylor's service?
Ms. Taylor will not be able to continue now, but I am talking with Ms. Cunningham about a possibility. This person doesn't have to be in my district.
We've discussed this in the past, and I think our conclusion was this is appointment by the district representative, but not confined to the district.
We've got a couple of people we're talking about, so I'll have someone in Jager.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. There, just as clarification for, for council, that's not applicable on all of our boards and commissions. There are certain regulations for, for different boards and commissions, so we need to be observant of that. If you have any questions, just please call Ms. Duncan in that regard. I do think the Recreation Association, though, is one that we've determined that is a true board appointment, I mean, true appointment by the representative. And so doesn't preclude somebody from being outside of the district. Let's move to items of old business, the second and final reading of ordinance number 60-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Allison and Kevin Duncan, located 255 Sheffield Road by 100% petition. Ms. Cotty joins us this evening. Any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 60-2020?
Yes, Mayor. Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 23rd, and they did recommend approval.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance 61-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Global Commerce Park, LLC, located at 700 Brockman McLymon Road by 100% petition. Any new or additional information in regards to ordinance 61-2020? Ms. Cotty?
Yes, Planning Commission held the public hearing for this as well on November 23rd, and they also recommend approval.
Based on the recommendation of approval by staff, do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes, thank you. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the proposed City of Greer resurfacing list for 2021. Mr. Steve Grant, our city engineer, joins us for that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before we review the list, I would like to give you a brief history and reminder of some issues on some of our key roads, and this will help explain the priority list when we get to those. You may recall in 2018 and 2019, it's your spring retreat, I mentioned Brookshire Road, West Phillips and West Moreland, about complaints we'd be getting and the width of those roads and their condition and speeds, and that we need to look at allocating funds to address those in the coming years. And then you may recall Brookshire was one of, was the worst of the three, and that in 2019, we were able to secure some funding to reclaim this road by a process known as CMRB or Cement Modified Reclaim Base, and we widened the road in the process. This project was not part of our paving in 2019. It was an unfunded project that became critical, and we were able to find enough funding to work this in last year. So that took care of Brookshire, but we still have West Phillips and West Moreland to address. And just as a reminder, those are farm-to-market roads, 18 to 19 feet wide, traffic over 4,000 vehicles per day. That's a lot of traffic for 18, 19-foot-wide road. The latest evaluation from the consultant that does our evaluations in just, just this past spring, their PCI's were 37 and 40, and that ranks them among our worst based on Here's a few pictures of West Moreland. If you'll note, the edges are crumbling and rutting due to the width, similar to Brookshire. And here's some pictures of West Phillips with similar issues. So with that background on those two roads, let's look at those lists. We'll start with the Greenville list. So in your package, you have one list for Spartanburg side and one list for the Greenville side of the city. Look at Greenville first, because you'll see the columns labeled streets, street names beginning and the end, et cetera. If you'll note the PCI column, again, that's the pavement condition index. That's the condition score from the evaluation, evaluation by our consultant IMS in the spring of this year. If you'll note, the first road on the list is West Phillips. I do plan to reclaim this road similar to what we did at Brookshire. Should get an extra two to three feet in width in addition to rebuilding the sub-basin paving. The total budget for the Greenville side is $395,211. That's a 50/50 split between the city and the GLDTC or the Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee. The crack ceiling is extra at the bottom. That is funded by the city. We should be able to pave most of the list highlighted in green, and all streets below West Phillips will be the standard mill and resurface like we normally do. We are planning to crack seal in Lismore Park, as you see at the bottom. Any questions on the Greenville list before we move to Spartanburg?
Steve, on Anderson Street, I've noticed like it's been marked up for, for, before it gets paved. There's one area that, and I don't know if it's still an issue, but there was, I believe that there is the underground water source that, because Anderson, I don't know the last time it was paved, but it has been inherently too long ago. The commission at the time was doing some sewer line repair from the inside.
Oh, I think, I think I know where you're talking about. That was about five years ago, probably.
Do I?
I think that project CPW was about five years ago. It was about the time I got here. I remember it, yep.
Right, right. And apparently what was happening is that this groundwater was actually seeping into their sewer line. Well, when that was done, then that section of pavement started to fall in because the water was not, it wasn't being drained off. And I know that we have, the city has gone out at least probably as many as four occasions to basically fill it with asphalt, so we need to make sure that it, it just doesn't get paved over.
Right, right.
Without double check.
Will do. So noted. Anything else on Greenville side?
Mr. Grant, West Phillips Road?
Yes, sir.
I know there was some talk in some form about swearing up how it comes out, Dr. McKibb Shoals there. Does that play into this discussion at all?
Not on our project. That, that was a DOT requirement for that proposed apartment complex down there, and actually, I don't know where that stands, but I know that particular intersection was going to be fixed during the course of the construction of those apartments. Last I heard, it was still on, but I haven't heard any updates, so. Have you heard anything yet?
The last we heard, it was about 18 feet. As far as you know, this- That would take our work would be done in conjunction with the improvement of that intersection and that project.
The apartment project, yes. So our project is separate.
And I hear you write this from affirmation, we're hoping it's showing 21 feet line right there right now, we're hoping to pick up about three more feet?
It's 18 to 19. We hope to come out around 22.
Come out about 22?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move to Spartanburg. Same information in the columns. If you will note, the first road is West Moreland. Again, we plan to reclaim this road as well. We should get an extra two to three feet in width in addition to rebuilding the subgrade and paving it. The total budget for Spartanburg is $308,641. That's split 50/50 between the city and the Spartanburg County Transportation Committee. Crack ceiling is extra, and that'll be funded by the city. Based on the available funding, West Moreland is likely the only road we'll be able to pave next year on the Spartanburg side, but given its condition and the traffic volumes it carries and the safety issues it has, I consider it as a top priority on the Spartanburg side. We are planning to crack seal in Dillard Creek and Hartwood Place subdivisions as well. I would like to note all these costs are estimated, and once the bids are received and we have actual unit prices, we'll determine what we can pave, and we may wind up paving one or two more streets or one or two less streets depending on actual costs. That's all I have to share on the Spartanburg side. Any questions?
On the crack ceiling, what, how much time does that buy us with the roads?
Crack sealing lasts from four to seven years. So in theory, you should reseal it every four to seven years, go back and reseal it, re-crack seal.
So after the crack seal wears off, you don't actually repave the road?
Well, at some point you will. We're just kind of buying time if you, the cracks basically let water into the subgrade and it deteriorates faster, so in theory, the crack seal extends the useful life of the pavement longer. So, I mean, at some point, the pavement's going to break up in between the cracks, and then you just, you know, address it all at that point. But the crack sealing is to make it last as long as possible.
In the scoring, when you're going and scoring the roads, are you looking for ruts and divots and things like that that cannot be, that's just beyond repair where the roads start beginning to fail?
Yes, sir. It's a pretty complicated matrix they use. They have a van with all kinds of sensors and cameras, and it measures cracks and ruts, roughness, and all these factors kind of go into some formula or that they use, and everything's given a score based on that data that they collect.
Are they scoring the roads on Spartanburg County side, too, or?
Yes, sir. Both sides of the city, all city streets.
And does Spartanburg still score their own, too, or?
They still score their own. I mean, they've already scored West Moreland for us, and I mean, they agree that the, the condition is bad, and, and they've agreed to fund 50%.
So both of them, the one we use in, in Spartanburg County, they, they-
We have our-
They come together pretty-
They, they do their own rating. In other words, if, you know, any other year, if we're rated, if our scores are 40 and they rate it and it's a 55, they may not fund it because their cutoff is a 50.
Okay.
So I send them our list, and we hope, you know, you know, hopefully we, you know, get enough streets that are under 50 by their scoring mechanism.
I recall when we, this has been several years ago, started to use that, I don't know if we called it PCI, but it was a scoring system. And at one point, it was noted that, hey, well, you know, our streets now, there's, you know, the worst ones might have been a 48, 49, but the majority of the ones that were even on the list were 50 plus. And now I saw what Duke Street was a 15 or something.
It was a 16, I think, yes.
And then Westmore's a 37. Is this rating similar? Do you know if it's similar to what we were using, or is this, or is it compared?
I'm not sure of what we were using beforehand. I know my predecessor rode around and he had a little matrix that he used, but I'm not sure. I honestly, I didn't look at it in a lot of detail when I came here because didn't really have time to ride 130 miles of streets. It seemed to be a real economical way to get some good data, so, so we've been piggybacking with the county since I got here.
So it's not likely his data and this data coincide, it's almost like two, we should just look at it separately?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Because that's, I don't think what he's saying is that's a concern to us that they're the same, because we want to make sure that this, that we're not letting the streets, you know, get run down now compared to where they, where they've been in the past.
Right.
And that's not the case.
It sounds like 50 is the new 30.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the best way to put it.
It's, 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 I can't, it's just hard to explain. I mean, sometimes I can send, ours is a 60, or let's say ours is a 55, and send it to Spartanburg, and they rank it a 45. And the next street I send us a 55, they rank it a 57, so. It's apples to oranges. I can't really predict what their score's going to be. I just send them as many streets as I think we can fund and justify, and then they apply their scoring to it, and usually it works out.
And they've evaluated all of our roads, right? So you've got a, a list of the city streets, their PCI rating?
They usually do them, well, they have a crew, I guess, that goes out and does the streets, and they probably have scored all of our streets in the past, but if, if the rating is old, they'll go rescore it.
Another company that we hired.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about-
Yeah, yeah, the company we hired, do they have a rating of PCI of every street?
Yes, I have every street in the city, just top 15 here.
I think one of the things that we, as I recall, one of the things that we liked about this particular system in hiring, there, there are several companies that do this, but hiring the company that we've got now is that it, it did put it in the hands of a third-party vendor sort of relationship, and that, you know, by using, using the technology that they had available to them, that it, it gave us a, a very subjective score that, you know, may or may not have, have been done in the past when somebody was just riding on a road and eyeballing it and feeling it whether or not, you know, what the score needed to be. And so, you know, I, I think as, as more and more communities, you know, go to, to this type of reconciliation on, on their roads, I think we'll, we'll, we'll see that sort of balance out over, over time. You know, it's interesting, the amount of information that we get, you know, from these folks and even a survey on our sidewalks, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of information that we can glean from this.
Yes, we're actually, we've been talking about, we have some additional information that's a lot more in-depth on conditions, and I talked to Mr. Merriman and Mr. Sell about it, and we're gonna, I think they want to share that information with you after the first of the year, kind of talk about budgeting going forward, et cetera.
That's good, then, because I, I'd like to see all of our streets and then see how, you know, where we, what our best roads ranked, and of course, our worst.
You're going to love this new data. You're going to love it.
And then as far as dollars that we're budgeting, I'm not quite sure that we've really increased in the last few years. The dollars of the budget for road making, so it's probably looking bad.
I have a feeling that's where we're headed.
Yes, sir.
I like this system better than the one where they used to ride around and just look at that, because you do get, get more information. I think we're able to take better care of the roads, and like you said, it's when we need to put more money in there, we need to look at that, too, and do what we need to.
Right. It's a good system. And by the way, just, I was polling the Greenville County officials, who, this is a new, a different consultant than they used four years ago, and they were very pleased with the data they got as well, the county was, so, and I was pleased as well, so I was just kind of curious what they thought, and they, we were in agreement that we really liked what we got this time.
Great. Any, any other questions?
Mr. Grant, just guess, first time I'm looking at this in depth with you, West Moreland Road, can you clarify where we stand now versus where we're going from a width standpoint? Just make that clear.
It's about 18 and 19 feet, same as the other one. 21, 22-ish.
21, 22.
Yeah, 20 feet being a good goal. If we had two 10-foot lanes and maybe a one-foot paved shoulder, that's, that's a significant improvement over what we have, so.
The, on West Moreland, I had a resident not too long ago actually reach out to me where it takes a harbor there. where it takes a harbor there, had them reach out to me, had a driver come through their back privacy fence into their yard three, about three times in one year, it made me wonder, how does, do we reevaluate signage as part of this, this process as far as like the Chevron signage?
Yes, we have, we actually, if you've been down there, you've probably seen some new signage we've placed in the last six, six to nine months. As far as I know, there's been no other accidents since then, but that doesn't guarantee anything.
I hadn't heard anything since then, so I wondered, so, yeah, great, thank you.
Others? Well, this requires action, you hear the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Some move, second.
Have a motion, second floor is open for discussion. Questions or further comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennetts?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Next item on the agenda in new business is a consultant for the Unified Development Ordinance, this is seeking approval for the consultants for the Unified Development Ordinance, the U D O that we have been speaking about as of late, Ms. Cotty joins us this evening to give us an overview of the request for proposals and action will be required. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so the city did release a request for proposals or an R F P on September fifteenth, we did have four consultants that provided proposals. After review, staff felt they were all qualified enough to move forward to the interview round and we were lucky enough to be joined by Mr. Mayorman, Brandon, my fellow planner, Ruthie Helms, and then Chief Flowers as an interview panel, so we did interview all four. After interviews, based on their presentations, based on their bids, we did unanimously decide that Kimley Horn would be the best choice. You'll see with the bid sheets, they did have an updated bid amount, they originally bid a hundred and fifty thousand based on kind of our conversations during the interview process, they really realized how in-depth the overview or the kind of overhaul that the zoning ordinance and L D R needs, and so we did kind of discuss that with them and ask them what would be an updated amount based on their better understanding of scope and they did come back at two hundred, that is still the lowest bid out of the four and again, based on their qualifications and their previous work on other projects like the downtown bicycle and pedestrian master plan, we did feel they were the best choice. The only other update I have is that council did allocate funding in this year's budget for half of the project, we initially asked for two hundred and fifty thousand and council allocated a hundred and twenty-five thousand for this fiscal year with the understanding that then we'd be asking for the remainder the next year. Based on this bid, we may have some savings in there, we still are gonna need additional funding for mass mailings and things like that, but it may come in under that initial ask, but I just wanted to point out that this item and this consultant is already budgeted for, but we are asking for approval to move forward with the procurement process, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion and with the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion, questions of Ms. Cotty or comments?
The opening process for representatives of all four companies present?
So, projects that are for planning projects are a lot different than facilities or infrastructure, so it's not, we didn't have a pre-bid conference, so we just received bids through our electronic system.
Not, not pre-bid, the bid opening, let me tell you where I'm going with the question.
Sure.
If, if they were there and they saw that they were low and they were low by a lot, or maybe they were dead on the money and then they said, oh, we can make fifty more grand just by saying we didn't understand this, go, if they knew, if they knew in advance, that's-
No, they did not. They did not know what the others bid, we kind of pressed them based on what we were expecting the bids to come in at and then what all of the other companies bid, and after speaking to them, they sort of said that if it was, you know, minor revisions compared to kind of, we use the term throwing the baby out with the bathwater, kind of a complete overhaul, they did give us an updated amount, and staff does feel very comfortable with this amount, as you'll notice, the other consultants did come in over this amount and we do feel like the amount of work that's going to be done and the public engagement that's needed, that the contract amount is much more on par with the project scope that we had in mind.
We have a pretty good track record with these folks as well, too, and, and, you know, familiar with, with their work, I, I know several of the other bidders and, you know, that's a, that's, that's a-
No, I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to make it, I guess, clear for the public.
Sure.
Because when you look at this and how we just get the bids, Jeremy, you got somebody there.
Others?
When they bid this project, you gave them kind of a, a rough understanding of what it is that they'd be coming in to do and or how, how did that process?
Yeah, so in the request for proposals, there's a lot of kind of technical things that the city asks for and then the attachment is the project specification and we gave kind of a paragraph background as well as about a page of bullets for the objectives that we wanted to get out of it as well as our anticipated timeline, and so based on that, they provided a scope of work and a, a proposed contract amount.
That was just, it just seems like a lot and, but it's kind of refreshing to see that the other groups looked at it and were kind of in the same ballpark as far as their estimate of manpower and the amount of time they have involved in it and different, and the resources that they do, different things like that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this process must be incredibly involved.
I've been through it twice in different jurisdictions and it is incredibly time-consuming and both staff time and public engagement and it will be a very large, heavy lift for council and planning commission as well, and we did call other jurisdictions before we put out the request for proposal, really when we were asking you last year to set the budget, that is why staff asked for two hundred and fifty thousand, because based on previous experience and then based on other jurisdictions and what they paid for their projects, we really felt like it was gonna come in somewhere between, we really thought two twenty-five and two fifty. So, this, this amount is not unexpected and actually is better than expected, to be honest.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennetts?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number sixty-four, twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ben Dillard located at five thirty-one Abner Creek Road and a portion of property owned by Mary Green located at five fifty-one Abner Creek Road from R M one to D R D. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please?
Sure, so you actually saw these parcels earlier this summer when we had a request to rezone the property for an apartment complex, but these are one hole and a portion, it excludes kind of the top ten acres at the very top north corner. So, it is currently zoned R M one and they are asking for a D R D for up to a hundred and twenty townhome units. For future land use, it is part of an employment center, so we did envision kind of higher-density housing in this location, and this is a current street view of the project, and then this is a site plan with a proposed layout, and I'll come back to this, but in terms of the use, again, they are asking for up to a hundred and twenty attached townhomes, the density comes out to about five point one five units per acre, it does include approximately twelve acres of common area slash open space, they do have a twenty-five foot perimeter setback and then thirty feet along Abner Creek Road, they have kind of the standard eighteen-foot interior along the interior residential streets, and I will note that their statement of intent does include kind of higher-quality building materials, no vinyl, hardy board, and it does say that they'll use a minimum of two of the material combinations to ensure that the elevations kind of have some differences to them and don't all look the same. Pretty standard traffic study is gonna be required by S E D O T and they will put in exterior sidewalks where feasible, there are some areas where topography and connectivity is an issue, and then again, this is the site plan kind of showing the general layout and I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm not certain if the applicant's here, but.
By show of hand, is the owner or representative of the owner of the property here?
Yes.
Thank you. So, so noted and if we need you, we'll give you a call.
Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and they did recommend approval, so.
Comes with approval from staff, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Some move.
And a second. We have a second, second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Griffin. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bennetts?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the first reading of ordinance number sixty-five dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Linda Smith located at thirty-seven hundred Brushy Creek Drive from C two to R M two. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please?
Sure, this is one parcel at the corner of the intersection at Brushy Creek Road, it's currently or most previously used as a hot dog stand, hot dog restaurant, so they are requesting to have a multi-family zoning and based on the square footage of the lot, they are wanting to turn it into a duplex, they're going to reuse the existing building or that is their plan, using the upstairs as one unit and then the basement as a second unit, so there won't be any additions to the building in height or in footprint, it'll just be the top and bottom and they're doing some interior, they will be if the rezoning is approved, they would be doing interior work to make sure it meets building code for both, so current zoning again is C two, you can see around it, there is quite a bit of residential, although it is at the corner of a busy intersection, and future land use is residential land use two, which is kind of our medium density, but still pretty heavily residential land use, and then here is a current street view. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and they did recommend approval, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
The purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Some move. Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Dumas. Uh, floor is open for discussion or questions? By show of hand, is the owner or representative of the owner of the property here this evening?
I'm not certain.
Small.
It's small.
I think they're gonna have a real challenge to get a duplex on that lot.
Yeah, I, so we did, before we brought this rezoning forward, we did require that they provide a site plan showing that they could meet parking requirements and I did have them consult with our building inspections department to make sure they understood what would be involved with converting the building, so we did have them go through that process. Again, I don't know the cost involved with that, but we did make sure that they at least had a conversation with them prior to starting this process.
Do you recall seeing where they intended for the parking to be?
It's, it's actually behind it, so it's hard to-
It can't be too far behind.
Oh, it can't be too far behind it, I'll do it.
Yeah, it's hard-
There's about a twenty-foot hole right behind it.
It is hard to tell from this angle, but yeah, to the right of, of the building, there is area for-
To the backside of it there, yeah.
So, I guess not really behind it, beside it, so to the right of the front facade.
Talk about the improvements, I mean, is it a duplex, one bedroom on one floor, one bedroom on basement?
They didn't provide any details, they don't necessarily have to, they just needed, you know, in terms of a duplex having two separate units, so I know, I mean, they did have a conversation with our building inspector about what the minimum kind of code standards to be considered a duplex would be and felt comfortable moving forward, but again, I can't, I can't answer those types of technical questions. The site plan, they did show that they could park two cars.
I, I, I find this a bit strange, I really do.
I've always thought it was kind of a miracle that nobody had run off Bush.
It's, it's, it's a miracle somebody hadn't drove completely through it at this point, but I, I don't know, I, the, the lot is not, the lot may be long, I mean, it may be large, but it, there's only a very small, small portion of it that's usable and while you may be able to park two cars on the side, I just, you know, the possibility of having a duplex that only has two cars are probably slim, none, I, it's always been a bit of a hazard right there in that, that corner anyway, I, I just, I just find this whole thing odd.
It's almost the same situation as the Dolly Shaq, remember, they was right on up the street?
Yeah, and it fell in the creek, literally.
I mean, it's, that street has, has some reconstruction on it and looks better than it has been years, I would just, I, I, it's hard for me to envision how you're gonna, how you're gonna make that attractive residence, I mean, I, I have no doubt that they can make a one-bedroom residence on each floor.
I mean, you've got a-
It's gonna look, it's gonna look crazy, though.
You've got a, you've got a high-tension power line right over the top of it. Yeah, yeah, I just don't know how it fits in with, with the rest of that.
I don't see this more as, and I don't know if this is applicable to the situation, but more like a D R D where it's something that they maybe bring to you and say, this is what we're proposing and then that gives us a little bit more leverage in what we can improve here versus just saying, yeah, it's wide open to a duplex and then kind of what we're talking about, you cram some kind of triangle-looking building on this thing and it, it, it looks nuts and it's not consistent with the rest of the, of the area.
Well, their intent is to use that building.
Use the building. This is gonna be the duplex?
Yeah.
That is the intent, but, but you have about, but you have a valid point, though, that, I mean, that, that is their intent, however, I, I mean, they, if you rezoned it certainly by right, they could tear it down and put in something different that's, meets our code.
I, I don't think from a line of sight standpoint that you could do anything different in that, because I think it almost encroaches on-
It, right-of-way.
Line of sight as it is right now.
It, it is adjacent to right-of-way.
You're bound to have right-of-way issues with the power line right behind it as well, too, I mean, that's, that's a high-power transmission line right there on the, on the back of it and you, you've got a, a bowl to creek within twenty feet of the back of the building, twenty-five feet of the back of the building. of the building, and it floods from time to time.
Do you anticipate having some type of a development plan by the second reading?
I mean, they're not required to provide one, but, I mean, we could certainly request it at your behest.
But with C2, they... C2, right?
It is currently C2.
Now, but with C2, they couldn't put two tenants in here, they couldn't use it as a duplex, even though it's a less zoning, right?
Currently, no, residential is not allowed in C2.
But how do, but how do we do that, you know, like on points that where we have a lot of...
So C1 does allow for live-work, which is vertical mixed use, where they can have it in the same building.
Well, in all honesty, this is not a very good commercial location because of the lack of parking, right? If you could convert it to a duplex and use, put two cars there, that may be the best use for it. Yeah, that is about the third business that's been...
At least, yeah.
Oh, yeah, at least. Good place for a tattoo.
Is the feeling that it would make more sense for it to be like a single-family home and just zone more of a standard residential zoning, is that what...
My feeling is, if there's going to be a rezoning for some kind of residential business, and I don't know that you can do it with just one unit, but DRD, because that determines how it's going to look, you know, is it going to be in, I think what we're all, what I'm looking at is going to be in character with the neighborhood. I mean, the neighborhood is old, but there, there's folks who've come in, subdivided lines, putting new homes on it.
I would, I would agree. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that the DRD would be necessary. I'd almost be of the opinion, I mean, my gut right now is that I couldn't support it or wouldn't support it. I don't know, but what, this may be not, this may be, you know, if we've all got questions about this, isn't something that may need to be tabled until we can get more information or held over or something? I just, I'm just not, I'm just not clear on this one.
I'd like to see some kind of plan.
I'd like to see something, too. I just, I just don't know how that's going to work and what it's going to look like.
Certainly, so what would you like to see from them? Just a site plan showing where the parking would be, and then would you like to see kind of their, their building plans, if they have any yet?
Vote.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure I asked for everything you need.
We will need to put that in the form of a motion, yeah. I think, well, I don't know that we need it in the form of a motion. I think, I bet...
It's something that we could just ask for.
Yeah, I think so.
Like you said, table it, and so we get more information.
So, 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 so let's, let's do this. What would give us a more comfortable level of proceeding? What are the things that would be of interest to you? I think site plan is...
Parking.
Elevations.
Elevations, yeah.
Floor plan, whatever, but the elevations, because you can see that building on all four sides, and I think that's, I think that's critical.
We don't want to blow up their budget for this small project, but it, I think...
We're going to need more information.
If they have an idea of what they're going to do, somebody can sketch it out. I'm not asking for, I don't, I don't need to see something from a design professional if the owner can sketch it out to how it's going to be.
I'd even like to, I'd even like to see the right-of-ways on that, on that flat in some regard. That's a, that's a state road.
Yeah, where that car's parked is not going to work going forward, the silver car there, I mean, if that, if that's their plan to park a car right there, that...
No, that's right-of-way.
Yeah, no.
The right-of-way is, is...
To the building.
Literally adjacent to the house, to the structure, or to, not the house, the commercial structure.
And so they wouldn't be able to even put parking in the right-of-way.
No.
So that, I think that's what we're kind of getting at, is where you go to park the cars and how are you going to come in and out of this place, and if it's going to be two units, then...
How does that look?
How does that, yeah, I mean, if they could just help us to kind of better see it, then it, then it might make more sense to us, but, but as it sits right now, it's just, there's not enough information.
Is that, is that clear for you?
Yes, thank you.
Then we will need Mr. Aaron Wood? Mr. Griffin? Mr. Griffin to withdraw his motion, please, sir.
I withdraw my motion.
And the second was?
I withdraw my second.
Withdraw the second. Okay, then we'll need a motion to hold this matter over.
I'll make a motion. We have the...
No second.
And we have a second, okay. So we've got a new motion to hold over. Questions or comments in that regard?
As a matter of housekeeping, when it comes back, that's not Brushy Creek Drive, correct, Brushy Creek Drive? The ordinance is saying Brushy Creek Drive.
Okay.
Yeah, it does have 3700 Brushy Creek Drive.
Hard to tell which road that does front on.
Well, that's...
We'll fix that as well.
Yep.
Were you at the planning commission meeting when they discussed it?
Yes, there was not much discussion.
Really?
I mean, they did ask about it. I think they initially thought it was going to be knocked down and a new one built and not reused, but then we did clarify that, so... No, I mean, the, the structure will be non-conforming if it is rezoned. It will not meet setbacks, just because, again, that right-of-way is right up on that line, right up on the structure, so...
Please just indicate, we're going to need more information to make a decision on this.
Absolutely.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion and a second to hold over any additional conversation in that regard. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 66-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Global Commerce Park LLC located on Brockman and Climen Road from S1, which is service district, to I1, which is industrial. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard?
Sure, so these are parcels in the southern portion of Global Commerce Park. They're currently zoned S1, and the park developer just wants to change the zoning to I1 to make it consistent with the rest of the park and allow kind of the same uses throughout their entire development. You, earlier tonight, that little square piece that's in the middle of the light blue and the dark blue, oh, earlier tonight, sorry, Nick, you did approve the annexation and zoning to I1 for that piece, so again, that would be consistency. Thank you. So again, currently it's zoned S1, and they are requesting I1, and then again, this is the future land use map, which is showing employment center community. This is an aerial of the site. You can see they've developed part of it, but most of Global Commerce Park is undeveloped. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on November 23rd, and they did recommend approval, and Mr. Fogelman is here tonight if you have any questions.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Fogelman, you're with us this evening, if you'll stand by if we have any questions in that regard. Counsel, floor is open for discussion.
Tell me again about the little square there.
So you saw it last month. They did annex that small piece in and request zoning for I1, and so it had second reading earlier tonight, so it's now part of the city in I1.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes, thank you for joining us, sir. Last item of business this evening is the first and final reading of resolution number 27-2020. This is a resolution consenting to the inclusion of certain property located in the city in a multi-county park and other related matters. Mr. Deaton joins us for this discussion, sir.
Mayor, counsel, good evening. Reno Deaton with the Grid Development Corporation. This request tonight comes to you to put, as indicated, property, formerly the Victor Mill property into a multi-county industrial park. Lots of advantages for that. The one that we'll focus on here for this evening is the ability to create a special source revenue credit, which would be the vehicle for our incentive for this project in year one. This project represents 350 multifamily units, a new capital investment of $44 million.
Counsel, you heard the information from Mr. Deaton. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Floor is open for questions.
Reno, I know that this is appropriate, or you wouldn't be here, but it's to be for its inclusion into an industrial park. How is the league made from residential to, or is that just a way of law?
Exactly, and we've seen in some cases some retail properties that were eligible for multi-county industrial park designation. Fortunately for us, the statute allows that, and it gives us a vehicle to provide incentive that then becomes a proportional incentive that we share with all the taxing entities on the record.
Others? Comments? Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, we have two items before us in executive session. I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a contractual matter pertaining to Blue Ridge Plantation, and also to discuss a legal matter pertaining to Leesburg Peak, and those are both allowed by state statutes, section 30-470A2.
Comes as a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Have motion to second, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. We've taken no action in executive session. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
In a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we have one more action, and that is for all of you to have a Merry Christmas.